Welcome to everyone, especially our distinguished guests here today. We'll begin first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome once again. First off, we have interpretation services available today in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please raise your hand and introduce herself en español? Gracias. Today's proceedings are being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. And before we get started with today's interview, I want to first extend a warm and heartfelt thanks to the search committee that has been carrying the load in this effort over the last eight months. The search committee has volunteered their time, their effort, and their resources away from their families and their jobs, often to the detriment of both unfortunately, spending nearly 70 hours in meetings during that time, including six community forums, public meetings, and nearly 40 hours of confidential candidate interviews. This diverse set of 11 community leaders, which includes four parents, three school leaders, a teacher representative, and a number of individuals representing our highest needs students and our communities, has had the Herculean task of reviewing a job description, selecting a search firm, and calling the finalists we have before us today, tomorrow, and Wednesday from a list that began with individuals who are well qualified to do this job and numbered more than 150. Over this time, this group interviewed 12 individuals and invited back seven for a second round of interviews in order to come to a consensus on recommending the three finalists for consideration by the school committee this week. So we are indebted to this group, excuse me, and I want to once again thank our co-chairs, Ms. Alex Oliver-Davila, who's our colleague on this committee and this committee's vice chair, as well as co-chair J. Keith Motley, Dr. J. Keith Motley, for their steady leadership, their dedication, and the dedication of all the search committee members in this process, including our colleague Mr. O'Neill as well. I'd also like to give a special thanks and shout out to the first ever student that has played a role in the search committee, Mr. Elvis Rodriguez, who is a junior at Snowden International High School. Yes, that's something to celebrate. You know, thanks to the urging of my colleagues on this committee as well as Mayor Walsh, we were able to include a student for the first time in this search and we were all very impressed by the work of Elvis during this process and we're really appreciative of him as well because he's going to be hosting our interview panels with students and teachers later today and continuing on through this week. So thank you, Elvis, as well. So moving on to the business at hand, today the school committee is going to interview one of the first of the three candidates for the superintendent we have before us today, Ms. Maria Ischierto. Welcome, Ms. Ischierto.
Thank you, Michael.
And you've just been through your first interview with the community partners panel earlier this morning that was also televised live on Boston City TV. As folks probably know, Ms. Ischierto currently serves as the Chief Academic Officer for Miami Dade County Public Schools in Florida. So, welcome.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you with us. For those of you just turning in, we will be continuing this process beyond the school committee interview this afternoon with two more community panels. First, at East Boston High School with students and teachers, as I mentioned earlier, and then coming back here to this room later this evening for the fourth interview panel, which involves parents and school leaders. And we really think this process, which is something that we followed in 2015, I believe even back in 2007 when we hired Carol Johnson, gives all of our candidates a view into what it's like in the day, in the life as a superintendent in the city of Boston. And, you know, since we're on thanks, I'll probably only do this once, so bear with me just one more moment, Mrs. Ischierto. I wanted to give a special thanks to not only the search committee, but those members that volunteered their time, 21 in total, to help us out on the interview panels this week. Volunteers, similar to the search committee volunteers, these folks have given up a lot of their time this week to help us out and give a little bit more color and context to what it is that we're looking for for a superintendent in these schools. And, you know, we have a really great group here. Out of those 21, we have nine current BPS parents and we're really proud of the broad expanse of consumers that are part of this group that'll be talking to Mrs. Ischierto as well as Dr. Casellis and Dr. Santos over the next three days. We've also got three students and four students sitting here with us on the school committee today, two teachers, two school leaders, our district's Assistant Superintendent for Achievement Gaps, the Chair of the Boston City Council's Education Subcommittee, and a number of other community partners from higher education, nonprofits, and elsewhere in the community that work to support students from across our city. So we're likewise appreciative of their time and their perspective and thank you for representing BPS families, teachers, administrators, partners, and parents in this process. And finally, for thanks, I want to thank the Shaw Foundation as well for providing us with financial resources to broaden our community reach during this process as well. So now on to the business at hand. Mrs. Ischierto, I'd like to, before we open it up to members for questions, give you an opportunity to make an opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaCanto. Like you, I'm very thankful for the time and effort that all of you here today and all of the folks that I've met over the last couple of weeks are really putting into this effort. As someone that's going through the process, I can certainly vouch for the fact that it's been very comprehensive, very intentional, and the folks that are sitting at the table reviewing materials, asking tough questions, and are putting a lot of deliberate thought into who the new next leader for Boston Public Schools is. And it's just a testament to the commitment and the value that this city places in education. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. And I did, in the last panel, and I think I should do it for the purposes of the school committee in particular, tell you a little bit about myself on the personal side. I know you've read my resume and all of the professional stuff, but just to give you a sense of who I am, I am obviously a career educator. I've been doing this work my entire life and there's a reason for that and we'll talk about that later, probably. But I'm a wife, I've been married for 29 years. I am a mother, I have three children, two of them are adults. I have a 23-year-old son who attends the University of Florida and May 3rd, God willing, he will be getting his master's in accounting. He'll be off the payroll for me, hopefully. I have a 21-year-old daughter who's studying communications, minor in computer science, also at the University of Florida, a public university in Florida. And then I have a 16-year-old daughter who is a freshman in high school and a competitive soccer player. And I've mentioned it to some of you that I've had the opportunity to speak to or to members of the public, you know, aspiring to be a superintendent was something that was in my future, but not necessarily in my near future only because I have a freshman in high school. And so Evelyn, it's really hard, I'm sure you wouldn't appreciate it if your parents picked you up and moved you from one city to the next in the middle of high school. And so the plan for me was that I would be waiting about three years and then consider a superintendency. The reason I stand before you here today is because once I kind of got to know the challenges that are facing the city of Boston and Boston Public Schools, I just, it just felt right. It felt right because of the fit. I feel that my career to date, the experiences that I've had, and the outcomes that we have achieved, my team and I have achieved, are just really very much aligned to the opportunities that are sitting before you today in Boston. And because of that, I felt that I just could not resist. And so that's why I'm here before you today. I am not crisscrossing the country looking for a title. I am not from Boston, but I'm certainly ready to be. I mentioned to the panel before you that I might be leaving warm weather, but I am a sports enthusiast, so being in a town that holds its sports teams to such high regard is something that I would embrace. And frankly, I'm just ready to do, to stretch myself and to serve another community as ably as I have Miami Dade. In terms of my growing up years, my schooling, I am a first-generation American. My parents were working-class immigrants, they came from Cuba seeking a better life. My grandparents seeking a better life for their children and their grandchildren. I was an English language learner and I'm the daughter of a single mom. My parents divorced when I was a toddler and so I understand the struggles that broken families, families living in poverty, have each and every day. I did not have someone that could sit down with me and make sure that my homework was done and that I had all the support at home that I needed, but I certainly was inculcated with this idea that if I worked hard that I could achieve many things beyond the status at that time in my family. And so it is that kind of notion that education is the great equalizer and that it's the ticket for families and communities to really break the cycle of poverty and lift themselves from where they are that drives me each and every day to serve the students that I currently serve and hopefully the children in the city of Boston. And so, you know, education for me opened many, many doors. I do say frequently publicly that schooling, school was my happy place and it was. There was a lot of stuff going on at home, but when I came to school, it all kind of faded into the background and I had amazing teachers and counselors and staff members that really cared about me and gave me confidence, built my self-esteem, and held me to the highest of standards. And it's because of them that I serve today. If I did not have those support systems, I don't know what would have become of me. In edutalk, you say, we call them, we call them early warning systems, early warning indicators. Like these children are, they're predicted not to do so well because of X, Y, and Z. And I certainly had a lot of those early warning indicators and because of school, I was able to achieve. I am the first person in my family to go to college. I am the first to own a home, the first to be able to have the luxury of traveling abroad. And I want to give opportunities like that to all children. So I'm looking forward to the dialogue and to your questions and for you to consider me as your next superintendent of schools.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ischierto. So just a couple of ground rules to go over with respect to my colleagues as briefly to discuss before we start. A number of my colleagues, as I mentioned earlier, played a part in the search process and have had a chance to talk to you for an extended period of time. So we want to give priority to those that have not yet had a chance to meet you and speak with you in detail. And so we're going to try to go around and do about two questions each, two to three, with each of those members and then we'll come back to Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Oliver-Davila for further questions and then we'll go around again, time permitting. We want to try to keep this interview to about two hours before we have to get you off to East Boston and meet with students and teachers.
That's going to be my favorite part of the day, by the way.
Of course, I think we're all looking forward to it. And on that note, I think it might only be fair that we start with our student if Ms. Reyes is ready.
Hi, first of all. So I'm sure you've heard or you've seen that students in Boston, we are well-known for our organizing and for being proactive as well as for advocating strongly to get the best education for ourselves and for our peers. And so I'm curious, how would you support the priorities of student-led organizations if chosen as superintendent?
Love your question, Evelyn. And first of all, I know a little bit about that because I believe, is it called S-Back? The Student Advisory Council was very much involved in getting the M7 passes for the MBTA and so I think that that's just a testament to what kids can do when they, then they really put their voice into their values and what they want for themselves as the primary instruments for us to be here in the first place. You know, in, I was a civics teacher, so I taught civics. And so to see children and youth really stand up and become advocates for their own well-being, I think is not only necessary, but it would be an instrumental part of my superintendency. Lots of, I can give you lots of examples, but I will tell you that we have, I and my team have created opportunities for student forums and student focus groups. We do not make any decisions at the central office level without the involvement of the students. So student voice is very important to me. So I'll give you an example. We were set on revamping or redesigning middle schools for kids only because the data was showing that the middle schools in my district were flat. They were not improving, they weren't getting any better. And so typically what happens when you have a bunch of smart adults is that the smart adults get together and they make a decision about what's the best thing to do for that problem, right? And one of the things that we were very emphatic upon was to have students inform that practice. So we had student roundtables, we did student surveys. We had, I don't know if you're familiar with, I wasn't, but they made me familiar with the program Big Brother on TV. So we had testimonial rooms where students, one by one, would come in and actually share on camera their feelings. We had like little sentence strips that they would finish. So when I come to school, I feel blank. What I, if I could change something in the school, it would be blank. And we had a bunch of those. And then they were edited and put together and I can tell you that I've watched it a number of times. We've watched it at cabinet, I've taken it to my colleagues and the superintendent schools and we just cry. Teachers have seen it because the kids were really telling us things that we would have not otherwise uncovered if we hadn't included them in having a voice. So, you know, I will tell you that very close to home, when the horrible nightmare of MSD happened in Parkland, while I was, and all of us were nationally, were very sad, there was a little lining of hope that kind of felt its way into my heart and it was because it was seeing students really take a position that they felt on a matter that impacts them each and every day and how the elegance and the articulate way that they committed to the cause what gave me hope for tomorrow's generation. And so I thank you for being here and being part of an adult process that usually doesn't keep, doesn't have, includes student voice.
Thank you. And my second question pertains sort of to the same area, but it's a little different. So we have a very active community in Boston that cares, you know, families, other education, like advocates, students, of course. That being said, sometimes the community's educational priorities don't align with the mayor's and so I'm curious, how will you balance the mayor's priorities with those of the community?
So, let me be clear. You are looking at me and considering me to be the superintendent of schools for Boston. And so that job requires me to have one central mission and it's the well-being and the academic achievement of the students in Boston Public Schools, period, end of conversation. So I am quite certain that working with the mayor, we can achieve great things. But my central focus is the school committee's direction, the direction of our families and our communities that we serve to make sure that we're doing right by children. The mayor's office is certainly an enormous part of that in that they, number one, are critical in the budget process. And so one of the ways that I would do that is to make sure that students' needs are being met and that we are focusing on student-centered investments at all times when we're creating the budget. The other way is, right now, that the mayor's office and City Hall is playing a huge role in, is in something that might not affect you directly because you'll be graduating in college and doing well, but it will affect tens of thousands of students in the future and that's build BPS. So how we roll out new facilities, how we use the dollars in BPS to modernize existing facilities, how we consolidate schools, those will be critical parts of the conversations that we're having with City Hall to make sure that the students' interests academically, socially, and emotionally are being met.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Ms. Robinson, would you care to take us forward, please?
Good afternoon.
Hi there.
Thank you for coming. I was here for your earlier presentation and one of the things that you talked just a very little bit about were some of the accomplishments and the investments that your community had made in early childhood. So I would like to hear a little bit more about what those investments were, particularly expansion and also about quality.
Sure, thank you. So what you heard me say, and I'll reiterate for those that were not here, excuse me, I have a cold, is this understanding that the way that you really dramatically transform a school district is being able to do two things. And that is your short-term game, for lack of a better word, and your long-term game. And that's something that I have been like talking about for a very, very long time in Miami Dade. Lots of folks don't have that privilege because of short tenures in the superintendency. I intend to have a long tenure as a superintendent and so I feel that I will be afforded the opportunity to play both of those games. And what I mean by that is, the long-term game is those critical areas that need to be handled and prioritized right now. In this case, achievement gaps in senior high, college and career readiness, graduation rates, that kind of work, and the redesigning of high schools and the schools particularly that are under-targeted and comprehensive support by the state. So those four dozen or so schools prioritizing their needs. But that has to be done and that work needs to be taken care of at the same time that you're building your base, right? Because otherwise, you're going to be stuck in this cycle of, you know, trying to remediate children and kind of correct situations that have been perpetually kind of strung along or can kick down the road. So for me, the involvement and the investment and the focus on early childhood is critically important. We serve about 9,000 students in, well, birth through four-year-old in Miami Dade. It's a portfolio approach, so we have, and that's in Miami Dade. There's others that are in the private sector that I'm not counting. Because our notion, similar to Mayor Walsh's vision, is universal pre-K, right? Whether we're providing it, someone else is providing it, et cetera. But we also have a role in when someone else is providing it. Right now, the data is very clear in Miami that those students that are enrolled in pre-K programs that we manage are succeeding at much higher levels than those that are not. That might be very different here in Boston. The reason I bring that up is because we need to learn from each other. So when there are private entities that are doing a bang-up job with little learners, we need to learn from that and vice versa. We have voluntary pre-K. We fund it primarily the second half of the day because the state only funds a half-day program through Title I, which I oversee, which is a $300 million federal grant. In addition to that, we have Head Start and Early Head Start that we run through the city. So the city is the, I'm sorry, the county is the delegate agency for that. We manage them and we run them. We have birth-to-two-year-old programs and the way that we select the sites for that is based on need. So we're looking at our most impoverished zip codes where parents can't really afford high-quality early childhood and that's where we seed these programs. We've invested in a lot of parental involvement and parental engagement, rather, professional development, if you will, for parents on how to help their early learners. We have a new program called Everybody Learns where we're partnering with Publix, which is our local grocery store. And there's, when you go visit and you do, when you're shopping in the produce area, you'll see pop-ups all over the produce area, which is a great marketing tool for us for our early childhood programs. But it's how parents can engage their children, like what colors do you see in the apples? How many pears are you, can you help me count the pears, things like that. We have sent devices home with children and in order for parents to have access to software that helps children learn and access to programs that help them develop as parents as well. It's called Connect at Home. And so we've deployed tens of thousands of machines home to parents as well for that. And so those are some of the things that we've done to grow our program, but not only to grow it and have more seats in the communities that need it most, but also to make it better. And the first thing I did, actually I was an Assistant Superintendent over academics at the time, was look at the materials. And we changed the materials that the students were interacting with and then heavily developing and investing in our teachers and professional development. That signaled to the rest of the organization that the little ones were just as important as the big ones. It was a huge shift in kind of the psyche of the organization. And then finally, the academic teams were sitting over here and they were K and up, or actually 1 and up, and we merged those two, the early childhood office with our literacy office. And so we have now kind of bridges from the content folks to the early childhood folks around dual language, we have dual language programs, as well as STEAM, STEAM programming for children as early as 3 and 4.
Wonderful, thank you. My second question, can you talk a little bit about your work and leadership in both closing and narrowing achievement and opportunity gaps?
Sure. So the theory of action in Miami Dade, and it's a very compelling story. So in 2013, there were 49 D schools and there were nine F schools in Miami Dade. Today, there are five D schools. I would argue with the state that there are four, but they win. There are four. And there are zero Fs. We've eliminated Fs for the last two years. That's an aggregate, right? That's the total kind of temperature, quality of a school. We have A schools that have achievement gaps, that there are pockets of children in A and B-rated schools. In the state of Florida, they grade their schools, that also have glaring achievement gaps. So I don't, I want to make sure that I'm talking to both of those. The work around achievement gaps has been a job that has encompassed the entire organization, not just academics, right? So I'll give you an example. We tier our schools, and maybe we'll talk about turnaround a little bit later, but we tier our schools from the most fragile to lesser fragile to pretty much humming, right? And what we have done in terms of that model that I supervise and that I've developed over the years is to really make it very clear in the organization, regardless of functional group, that these are the most severe, less severe, and not severe schools. So making sure that you create that culture organizationally, systemically, is really important because when folks and facilities are making decisions, they're always going to lean towards the more fragile schools today. That wasn't the case in MDCPS seven years ago, eight years ago. That's today's culture. And so I've been able, my team and I have been able to kind of change that mind shift. We have, I'll do a couple of pockets because when you talk about achievement gaps, you're talking about African-American students, English language learners, you're talking about students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students, for the most part. And so there's work, different work to do with each of those subgroups. And so, there's work, different work to do with each of those subgroups. With English-language learners, I mentioned it in the first panel, we've been pretty deliberate about making sure that we understand, A, the quality of the, of the instruction and the program. It's, it's, it's dramatically improved over time, and our outcomes, I think, are a testament to that. Um, but for a while, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, a priority in terms of actually looking at what the students were being asked to do, both in EL and in SED. I mentioned that in my first panel, but I will be a little bit redundant, in that, you know, we have students that when you actually visit the classroom and you look at what they're actually being asked to do, it's nowhere near grade-level work, and it's nowhere near, um, really pushing them to their capacity. And so, having, um, training with teachers, doing instructional walkthroughs, uh, classroom walkthroughs with principals, coaching people on the look-for's, and it's not a checklist, but it's really asking yourself, okay, what is the standard that this teacher has planned for? And what are the students being asked to do? And is that evidence of mastery of that standard? It seems very simplistic, you would think that that's the norm, but it's not. And there's a myriad of reasons for that. Some of it is implicit bias, some of it is, they, they're just want the children to have some level of success. So, grade inflation plays a part in that as well. And what we're doing is a disservice to the children. I tweeted about that, uh, not too long ago, and I got a lot of feedback from, no, I didn't tweet, rather, I put it in Workplace, which is an internal mechanism that I communicate with teachers. And it got a lot of conversation from teachers, because they agreed that we need to step it up and ask children to, you know, to do grade-level work. In terms of special ed, um, for many years, we were segregating, for lack of a better word, separating our special ed students or our differently-abled students into classrooms, because, you know, we needed an expert, and they needed to be, you know, with people that knew how to do that work. And I submit to you that when you include students, the data is, the research is very compelling, that they're gonna, they're gonna do better. Not only that, but sometimes even their peers or non-disabled peers are gonna do better. And so, the work around inclusion has been, um, really a very high priority for my team and I, particularly, I would say, over the last three years. That involves a lot of professional development. That involves, um, a, a lot of just, uh, monitoring and support, and providing support so that the teachers feel supported and the children feel supported. And I mentioned it before, just this past year, we included, we have thirty-seven thousand, um, SED students, and we included, just this last year, eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-two more in the Gen Ed program. That moves children, that moves schools, and that moves communities. The English-language learners as well, looking at them and how long they've been in an English, learning kind of mode in, in the classification of ESOL, and trying to accelerate that while supporting them is really important. When you see the exodus of kids coming out of ESOL and going into mainstream Gen Ed, they, their, their graduation rates have increased dramatically. So, just to give you an example, in SED, um, the graduation rate for, in Miami Dade is eighty-six, um, sorry, eighty-four, eighty-four-point-six, rather. It's seventy-something for the state. So, we're head and shoulders above the state, and I think that's because of our very intentional includes, inclusion of children and holding no children, there are no children of a lesser god. And so, all children can learn at very high levels, and that's our expectation. When it comes to our ES, our, our ESOL students as well, you'll find that our graduation rate with our ESOL students are well above, um, the state as well. And then, ultimately, closing of the gaps is gonna be measured by looking at the data, right? And in Miami Dade, when you look at the Hispanic and Black students, I'm sorry, the English-language learners and the Black students, they have closed their graduation gap in half. And when you look at economically disadvantaged and students that are differently-abled, they have closed their graduation gap from twenty-eleven into two-thirds. And so, you are now seeing kids that are economically disadvantaged across a very large district with only three percentage point difference, uh, in comparison to their non-economically disadvantaged children. That's what closing the achievement gap looks like.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair. Welcome, I was very excited to meet you. Uh, I know that my colleagues and the committee have done a great job of reviewing qualifications, so we, we assume you're ready to do the job. So, I wanna ask some questions, and maybe have some complexity, for there may be no right answer, just wanna get a sense of your thinking. So, my first question, and I'm, is, you know, what do you think about what people call comprehensive schools or neighborhood schools with wraparound services as a way to close the achievement of the opportunity gap? And a corollary to that question is, you know, what are the public health strategies? Those strategies that, uh, come from outside the school? That you think a city needs to implement to support the district's efforts in closing the achievement gap? I can repeat that.
No, I think I'm good. Um, so, I know that, um, well, I actually visited. I spent, um, a full day, you know, driving through the neighborhoods in Boston, and, um, I must have been around probably, I don't know, maybe twelve schools, um, a couple of weeks ago. And I got the, the, kind of like a holistic look at some of the schools, and many of them are actually connected to community centers, um, which is interesting. I have lots of questions about that, like, how does that community center service that school? Does it, does it not service that school? Who does it, just the community? Is there a relationship between that agency and the school site? So, those are questions that I have, they're not answers that I have for you, Dr. Coleman, but certainly, I would wanna look at that. In Miami Dade, one of the things that we've done, um, is particularly around our, what we call our Tier Three schools, which are turnaround schools, is, um, create, um, wraparound services for those schools. We have a number of things we've done. So, we have a mental health department centrally, that is deploying social workers, therapists out to schools. So, centrally, based on need and demand. Then, we also have, we partner with lots of, um, community agencies and organizations, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, uh, Women of Tomorrow, Communities in Schools, Teach for America, City Year, lots of different entities that are, um, supporting schools in different ways. What we try to do centrally is make sure it's balanced, right? So, to make, right now, what I see, and I could be wrong, but my, what my perception is, is that oftentimes, in Boston, that's left up to the individual principal. There's value to that, I don't wanna devalue that. However, that is a huge lift for a principal that is trying to, number one, make sure to manage and operate his or her school, um, and the facilities themselves, the folks that work there, supporting the folks that work there, supporting instruction, meeting with parents, the, et cetera. So, that is a full-on job. And then, on top of that, um, you were, were kind of holding over them this sense of you are now responsible for being the liaison to connect people in the community. There is value to that, but it shouldn't be the, the end game. It shouldn't be the only game in town. So, the way I see the central office is in leveraging large partnerships, like, let's say, whether it's City Year, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, whether it's, we have relationships with Royal Caribbean, Carnival Cruise Lines, they're doing school beautifications, they're doing all kinds of things. Making sure that, that you're putting those resources or kind of facilitating those resources to go to the pockets that, where the gaps are most, and then helping those principals build those relationships. Now, in terms of, of wraparound services, um, we have worked really hard in making sure we have, um, um, partnership, um, with the county. It's called, um, give me a second, um, oh my God, I'm like, a little, um, where we, Health Connect, sorry, Health Connect in schools. So, the Health Connect program in our district, what it does is it brings in a, um, a nurse or a licensed practitioner, a licensed practitioner, to be, to serve a clinic at the school. And we don't just say, okay, we're gonna pop these up in every school, we look at data. So, we look at the data centrally, and we say, where are we having the lowest attendance for? Because kids are being, are sick and are not attending school? Or where do we have the lowest, um, access to quality healthcare? And what communities are kind of suffering through that? And where those gaps are in the community, that's where we kind of push resources or direct resources to. So, Health Connect in our schools offers immunizations to children, immunizations to, uh, parents, like, the flu shot to parents. We've built, um, uh, ki, those kind of, of, uh, opportunities for schools to be like a twenty-four-hour schools, right? So, that the school shouldn't shut down and lockdown. At the end of the day, when the last bus rolls out, the school should come alive. But, it should be a different kind of life, right? This is the life where the school now, it's going into like its, its second kind of iteration, where you're having adult ed classes, whether it's classes for citizenship, whether it's classes for adults to learn English, whether it's career and technical adult classes, um, whether it's healthcare. Um, and that's really like, ideally, what schools should be doing in communities. They shouldn't just shut down when the principal waves goodbye to the last bus. And that's something that I would love to see, um, expand in Boston.
Great, thank you. And better yet, you answered my second question about relationship between central office and, and local schools. So, I'll go, uh, uh, another question, um, in, I'm delighted to hear that you're in here for the long game and that you're aspirational, I think that's, I, I agree with that, it's very important to the health of the district. So, in five, ten years, what do you think you will be known for?
So, in five or ten years, that's a great question. No one's asked me, I've been through so many interviews and so many, no one's asked me that question, so thank you for that question.
It's a family trait, to be known for questions.
In, in five to ten years, I think I would wanna be known for building coherence in, in an organization, in, in a large urban school district. Uh, I'll give you an example. We recently were accredited, or reaccredited by Advanced Ed. They came to our school, I'm sorry, to our district, they went to like all schools. They spent three, five days visiting classrooms. They observed like, they interviewed like a thousand people and visited like six-hundred-and-fifty classrooms, something crazy like that. They had a team of sixty-six people come down to the district. So, it's a very comprehensive look at the whole organization. They met with board members, they met with, uh, they observed lessons, they met with teachers, parents, leaders, cabinet members, you name it, community members. Very thorough job. In the exit interview, what they said was, you, uh, are very big, but you feel really small. And so, I think, to your question, that's, I think, what I would want to feel, that we're really large, we have a hundred-and-twenty-five schools, it's, it's a big, little city. But, everyone, the, what they meant by that, 'cause I asked, like, what do you mean by that? Can you elaborate? And what they meant by that was that they were hearing the same things, whether they were in a classroom talking to a teacher, or whether they were speaking to a leader, or speaking to a student. It read, there were themes that resonated throughout the organization. One of the themes is that the central office serves schools. We're not a compliance organization. We have enough compliance to deal with from the state. Now, will there, is there accountability, or are we checking things? Absolutely. But, our main driver is to support schools. So, this, this shift, I think, I, I hope, or even a bigger shift, if there is one already, to be a, a service-oriented central office to schools, I think would be one of the things that I would want them to say about me in five years. I think that, and I've said this before in other interviews, but not today, I read a statistic that said that they interviewed teachers and leaders, and seventeen percent fully agreed that they knew the structure and the support, of, of the central office, and what, who to call for support. I would want, in five years, heck, I would want in one year, for the, that answer to be, I absolutely know who to call, and I get a response when I call, and they are readily available to support me to solve the problem at hand. So, that I think that that is something that I would absolutely, beyond, of course, you know, having students actually graduate, college and career-ready.
Thank you. So, I, I hope at the end I have a chance for other questions, but I want to let other people have time.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Dr. Coleman. Move on now to Dr. Rivera.
Buenas tardes.
Hola.
So, I'm, um, I'm a professor at UMass Boston, and we do a lot of work with teachers, future teachers. And one of the issues that our school system is facing is that lack of representation of teachers of color in classes, schools, where the majority of the kids are students of color. Forty-two percent of the students in BPS are Latino students, but they're definitely not forty percent, uh, Latino teachers. And so, this is a real issue in terms of not just recruitment, but also the retention of teachers of color. So, I'm just curious if you could speak a little bit about what your experience has been, recruiting and retaining teachers of color, and why does that matter?
So, and let's start with why does that matter? Students need windows as much as they need mirrors, right? And I think the research is very compelling around the fact that children need to see, um, mo, role models, whether it's in teachers, in principals, in elected officials, that they can see themselves in the faces of the adults around them. I think that's vitally important. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that that is something that we have achieved, um, in Miami Dade. We're still working through that, okay? I think that it's, as our communities become more diverse, I know that eighty-six percent of the students in Boston Public Schools are, are Black or Brown. That's an enormous undertaking to get kind of, to get parity in your, in your teachers and your leaders. Enormous undertaking, and it's not gonna happen overnight. That's a long-term game, right? And so, um, what we are doing, we're, we're trying to attack the problem in, in a myriad of ways. From our own pipeline, meaning our children, to the pipeline that's coming to us from higher ed. And I'll give you some examples. So, in our, in our school district, we have teaching academies. We have, we're big on academies and magnet, schools of choice programming, whether they're magnet or non-magnet choice. We've created a number of teaching academies in our district, and we're trying to be very, um, intentional about who are the kids in those teaching academies. Because ultimately, if they continue on that trajectory, they're gonna go to, um, a, a higher ed. Typically, they go to the local university. Like, without question, labor markets are remarkably local, right? Remarkably local. So, how to influence that is important to us at, at, in, in the organization itself. We have a program called the Five Thousand Role Models, which is a program for African-American males. I guess, it's very, it must be very similar to Becoming a Man. And so, I would look at maybe Becoming a Man and trying to kind of look at students and try to encourage students in that program to consider the teaching profession. Now, when you look at the, at the colleges and the, the, the schools of higher, of ed, we are doing a couple of things. We are working with FIU, we have, that's our local university, we call, have a program called Access. And what we're trying to do is look beyond FIU for pipeline. The vast majority of the students at FIU are Hispanic. So, what we're trying to do is target post-secondary institutions, I know you have many, that are, have high concentrations of our traditionally marginalized, um, subgroups. So, if you're looking for African-American, or even males, you know, whatever that subgroup is that you're trying to influence, look for where there's a critical mass of them, to try to develop programming in there. Looking for alternate pathways to certification is something that we're doing, uh, a lot of work around. The HR folks are doing a lot of work around. For instance, when, working with local universities, particularly in, in the colleges of math and science, and there may, they may be like engineering majors, and trying to influence. And now, we weren't able to do that very well before, because our salary scales were not comparable to what their earning potentials were. So, we worked hard on salaries, because we know that if we increase teacher salaries, we're gonna get more, more desire to be a teacher. And so, when we, that was a lever, people can, are like, what does that have to do with diversity? Has everything to do with diversity. Because then, we're now looking at populations that may not consider going into engineering, but rather go into becoming a secondary math teacher, or a secondary science teacher, rather than a biology major or whatnot. So, looking at alternative, um, certification is important. For us, for me personally, what I would wanna do first up is to look at your attrition, and when, why are they leaving? So, who's leaving and why are they leaving? I'm big on data, um, data is my thing. And so, I would, I don't really shoot from the hip. I don't, uh, my team and I don't say, oh, we're gonna do this, because we think it's the right thing to do. We take steps when we have evidence that this is, that the data is pointing us in that direction. So, I would, we have in our district, and I would hope that BPS has it as well, when folks are separating from the organization, we take great, instead of just saying, okay, bye, we wanna make sure that we know why they're leaving, so we have exit surveys, and we wanna know where they're going. That is very informative, because if you find out the Because if you find out the root cause, then you can actually try to work towards that root cause. And I don't know how much of that is happening here. Another thing, and this will be my last piece, I'm sure we'll get back to it, is sometimes there's, for instance, at my, in, in, in my particular team, when I arrived, there was not a whole lot of African-American representation. And I was dismayed by that. And so there were not, at the moment, there were not folks that were ready at the mid-level, at the mid, mid, senior level, to step up in, junior level, to step up into these senior roles. We just didn't have that kind of middle layer. So we, I, we have been working very, very hard in making sure that we're looking for qualified minority candidates in that mid-layer. And I can tell you right now, that should a vacancy become available in two of my direct reports, I have fillers for them, backfill for them, and they are minority. But that couldn't have happened if I didn't, we didn't look beyond the next layer. And then, you know, looking at, 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 at leaders and how leaders are making hiring decisions, and really supporting them through the personal process. That's just as big as the budget process, as the operational process, as the instructional process, as the community engagement process. Is, you, principals can't be masters to all of those functions. It is our job as a central office to support them and train them and groom them so that they can be as strong as any HR specialist in recruiting, retaining, and attracting talent. And I know I said lastly, but I'll say one more. One of the things that we recently did is to try to kind of, you can't do it at scale overnight, right? So what we've tried to do is we've tried to incentivize teachers to go to the most fragile schools. And that is slowly kind of turning that teacher demographic in, in certain schools. And we did that through an MOU with the teachers' union where we're, we're paying upwards of $12,000. They have different pockets in those $12,000, but to recruit, retain, and reward. So it's looking at teacher attendance, teacher willingness to move from school A to school B, and it's looking at learning gains that that teacher is creating for her children every year. So we're paying teachers to move, and that's helped us try to like diversify to the extent we can.
Thank you. So I have two questions, but I only have room for one, and maybe you can come back to me later. Also, I read your bio, and in your bio you state that you're a proponent of school choice. So if you could say a little bit more about that, what do you mean by school choice? And what are, excuse me, what are your thoughts about charter schools?
Great question. I was wondering when I was gonna get that question. So here is my position on charter schools. And you have to understand, since you read my bio, my background. So I, I come from Florida. The landscape, the charter landscape in Florida is really different from a lot of other places nationally, very different from Boston. And so having been born and raised in Miami, I had a certain opinion, which I'll share with you in a minute. And over the last several years, I've also had an opportunity to travel quite a bit and network with colleagues across this country and see kind of a different side to that movement. And I'll tell you what that is. In Florida, the charter industry is highly privatized. I personally do not feel that there is room, or that there should be profits in the education space. That's my personal opinion. I don't think, I think that companies should not be looking at pupil, pitting pupil against profit. I think there's a lot of things that can go south when you're pitting pupils against profits. That's my opinion. Having said that, I have visited, been in, and have friends that are leading and teaching in amazing charter schools. There are great public schools, and there are lousy public schools. There are great charters, there are lousy charters. They are all our children. So in terms of how do I feel about charters? I think that we have, sometimes we have a lot to learn, and sometimes we don't from them. Sometimes they have a lot to learn from us. In NDCPS, I oversee seven district-managed charters. That was the creation of my superintendent way before lots of folks were even kind of stepping into that landmine. He said, came to us one day and says, I wanna manage charter schools. And the whole cabinet looked at him like he was nuts. We're like, what are you talking about? We're like public schools. And now I have the, the great pleasure of doing that. They have their own boards. And basically what the relationship is, that they, they look at us for à la carte services. So we may be doing their payroll, we may be doing some of their curricular support. We may be doing, we always influence their instructional materials purchases. They may participate in our professional development. So we, they, they gain from us, we manage them, but they're charters that the, that the, that the school board has authorized. Now, having said that, sometimes it's to our benefit. I'll give you an example. We have a community booming called Doral, where there are lots of new condos and apartments popping up at such a, a breakneck speed that we can't keep up with the booming number of children. And so what we did was we partnered with the city of Doral. They put up a beautiful school that the district did not pay a penny for. It's a district-managed charter. So it's our school, they put all the money into building the school, and the kids are thriving. So you, you know, you have to kind of look at what kind of relationships you can build. However, there should be high quality period across all schools regardless. Now to your choice question, I am a proponent of choice. I, I, and sometimes that statement is only looked at through a charter lens. Oh, she's pro-charter, she said she's pro-choice, she's pro-charter. What I mean by I am a proponent of choice is that we have built in Miami-Dade over a thousand different choice options for our children. We have 350,000 kids in our school district, and 68% of them are exercising choice. Some of those are charter, but many are magnet programs that they're going to. Many are academies within their own schools. So there are choices within our portfolio so that students can, can follow their passions. You know, maybe it's information technology, maybe it's hospitality and tourism. We wanna give kids a portfolio of programmatic options, and we do that through choice.
But how are the, how, how is this funded though? Because one of the issues we're facing in our district is when the kids leave BPS to go to a charter school, the funding follows them. So how are we gonna deal with, how would you deal with that issue with the loss of enrollments? And, you know, the correlation to the charter schools?
Good question. So, yes, they're competing for us, for our kids, right? 18,000 students, I believe, are choosing something other than BPS. That's the, my understanding, 18,000. So ultimately, you want those, you wanna attract those kids back. You can only attract those kids back by having high-quality choice options within your BPS portfolio. The reason that we are able to achieve at the levels that we're able to achieve and kind of stave off this charter momentum in Miami-Dade, because I understand in Massachusetts there's a cap, but there's no cap in Miami-Dade, they're just popping up. The reason that we are able to stabilize ourselves to an extent, we have declining enrollment too, is by continuously pushing ourselves to innovate. We wanna be the best, best thing in town. And so it has pushed us to create all these different choice options so that we can attract the kids back. So we're competing, don't get me wrong, we are competing with the charters. It's made us better to some extent, because we're not the only game in town. But ultimately in BPS, how I would do it is you have to look at your footprint, and I said this in your, in the first panel. We have to right-size this district, and there's plans for that, right? There's some planning, much more work has to be involved in that. But once we right-size and we can raise that quality of education in every zip code and, and include choice in those, in, in that environment, I believe that you can then start attracting students back from charters and kind of stave off that continuous kind of exodus of children to charter schools. But it takes right-sizing, and it takes improving the quality of schools, the schools that we have with the kids that we have now first. And rebranding, doing a lot of branding around the many amazing things that are happening in BPS. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Kierdo, and thank you, Dr. Rivera. Moving on now to Mr. Tron.
Good, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to Boston.
Thank you.
And thank you for agreeing to attend this interviewing session with us. Most of the questions my colleagues have asked you pretty much cover everything that I would like to hear. And so I'm, I'm going to ask just general questions. The first general question I, I have for you is equity in general sense. What does equity mean to you? How do you apply your own guiding principles in your own equity definition into projects like school, school programs, budgets? Budgets is one of the big issue, budget. And balance that with community, different interests. Different communities in, in Boston have different interests. Let's say when it comes to budget, how do you balance those interests with the budget in terms of equity?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I work in a school system that has an elected school board, nine-member school board. And so oftentimes, conversations around equity come up. And I typically am underneath my breath going, hmm, that's equality, that's not so much equity. In that every one of them, because they're, they're, they represent a particular neighborhood. So I'm, I'm kind of, if you follow me in my train of thought here, I'm kind of creating those same pockets of different people with different needs. Even though they care immensely about all of the children in Miami-Dade, but ultimately they are elected within a constituency and within a geographic realm. And so oftentimes, I have to play that role, the role of the clarifier between the difference between equity and equality. And equity for me is very simple. Those that need less need, need more, require more. Those that have less require more. That's the definition of equity. Now, you're doing a lot of that work. We don't have weighted student funding. I mean, we do to an extent with some of our sped students, et cetera. But you are trying to do something that if you get it right, would be, would be a something that the rest of the country could really kind of get their, wrap their minds around. Which is, you are looking at not only weighted student funding, and you have that, but you're also exercising an opportunity index. It's not perfect. It, it, it's new, relatively new, it, there's room for improvement. But you're exercising, taking some actions that will lead ultimately to more equitable outcomes for kids, right? And so all kids are not gonna get to the same level with the same amount of support. Some kids need more support than others to get parity in their outcomes. That to me is what equity is. You want parity in student outcomes. And you recognize that because of a lot of different variables, that doesn't happen organically. So you have to kind of create a system where that is nurtured and where that manifests itself. So that to me is the definition of equity. Some examples, let's go back to choice with the question that Dr. Rivera asked me. So we have schools very similar to your, some of your schools, like the exam schools, which are considered the highest, best, biggest quality, you know, the, where everybody wants to go to school. And there are limited seats in these schools. And so in Miami-Dade, we wanna have, make sure that all students have access to some of those schools, right? And so we've taken some measures to do that. It's hard, it's a gnarly process. But some of the efforts that we've done is to kind of franchise some of those programs. So we have a program in, in, on an island that is very highly coveted called Mast Academy. It's US News and World Report. And everyone wants to go to Mast, but it's on an island. It's landlocked, it's not gonna grow. And so what we've done is we've branded, we've used the brand of Mast, and we have other Masts across the district. And so it might, it's, it might be a different iteration of Mast. It might have a little different twist to it, but you're getting the same program, if you will, in different zip codes. So you're opening seats. We've done that with a school that Mr. Carvalho, my superintendent envisioned called iPrep. It's his school, he's the principal of the school, and there's an enormous waitlist in the thousands. So we're developing other sites to have iPrep academies within schools. So that, we're not building another school. We're going to a school, and we're building an academy within that school that is the, is the, the brand of that school that is in such high demand. That's one of the ways. Now, when you have choice, when you have choice, and this is, I, I could have written a dissertation on this, there's a tension between, in my opinion, equity and full, like equity, systemic-driven equity strategies and choice. Because if, if you have choice, parents are voting with their feet, right? Parents and families are voting with their feet. And then you have an organization that holds in very high regard equity. Maybe not all parents share that same value. So they're gonna, they're gonna move their children wherever they see fit. And then we step back and we look and we say, wait. But all of the, a preponderance of white children are here, or a preponderance of Hispanic children are here, a preponderance of black children are here, and we wanna fix it, but we believe in choice. So that tension exists. So one of the things that we've done is through, school choice and innovation is in, falls under my, in my shop. And one of the things that we've done, we have a lottery. So the parents sign up for, the parents or the children rather, they sign up for five different schools if they are applying for a magnet. That means that they're leaving their home school to go elsewhere. And one of the things that, that we have done is to look at, you can't look at race, but you can look at socioeconomic. So we use census data to look at zip codes that are high-poverty zip codes. Those are the kids that can't get into Mast and iPrep and some, a lot of other schools. And so we have made, created ways for the lottery to give them multiple tickets, if you can follow me. So instead of them having one ticket in this big bowl of lottery balls, they have two, or sometimes three, because they're coming from these zip codes that we're targeting. And so we're trying to create a system where parents still have choice, but we're trying to put up guardrails so that we can try to create more equitable opportunities for children in all zip codes. Now ultimately, the, the, the vision is that you have a high-quality school in every zip code. I still believe in choice, because you know what? Maybe the high-quality school, this comprehensive high school in my neighborhood, it's fantastic, but it doesn't have an IB program. And we really value bilingual education, so I want my child to go to bilingual school. So yeah, sure, there should be choice thematically, programmatically, but it shouldn't be because I have no choice in my own backyard because my school is not high-quality.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To a little more specific question, since I have, only have two questions, have a series of them, but I, I wanna select just two. How familiar are you with the federal laws surrounding the coverage for students with disabilities? And would you give us some examples of programs and initiatives that you, that you did or you are doing in implementing those, the application of those laws?
So yes, I oversee the exceptional student education department in Miami-Dade and the federal grant, which is IDEA. We've done a lot of work around our students with disabilities. I think that when you look at our outcomes, you, it's testament to that work, right? I think we have 80-some percent of our students that are special ed are, are graduating. And this whole push towards inclusion, which we've talked a little bit about before. With, in terms of special ed With, in terms of special ed programs, there's been an enormous move towards really looking at data with these students. Looking at the IEP process that they, that their teams of teachers, their M team is looking at. And then looking at the systems that put students into an exceptional student category to begin with. So, we're doing work around not only the programming that students with disabilities have, and what the quality of those programs are, but also the work with families in terms of supporting those families, depending on the, on the exceptionality. We have a parent advisory council for students with disabilities. It also includes gifted and talented, because gifted and talented children are exceptional too. So it includes students with disabilities as well as our gifted and talented parents have representation at that table. And they're involved in budgeting, anything from budgeting, anything to, in terms of allocation, teacher allocations, and what those formulas look like for different groups of students. And we have those conversations, we run models and simulations with those parent, with that parent group. And they advise us during the budget process as to what we're going to be doing in terms of the budget with kids. Now, in terms of the data and what the data is showing us is we've had an enormous increase. This is not singular to Miami-Dade, this is a national phenomenon. Our, the students that are on the autism spectrum are just growing by leaps and bounds. And so, making sure that we are up to date in terms of the research around autism and developing our teachers and the paraprofessionals that work with those students is really important to us. And then servicing those parents, because those parents have an enormous, some of them more than others, an enormous role to play at home with the, with children that are very hard to support. Now, when it comes to our ESE students, I think the pivotal point is when the entry, entry into ESE. I've taken a look at your rates of students with disabilities or are differently abled students, and it's twice the national average. It's much higher than Massachusetts in general. And so that, to me, is like a, like a, like a, like a little alert. Like, let's look at this a little deeper, and let's drill down into the data and see why that's happening. And so I would be interested in coming into the position to look at what are the systems in place in terms of the multi-tiered system of support and the PBIS programming, to see whether or not we are really doing our due diligence before we're categorizing a child into an exceptionality that he or she will more than likely be in for the long, for the long haul. Another thing that we've done is we have, we really purchased, but we, we partnered with a company and we have a platform that is really providing teachers with an enormous amount of lift when it comes to all of the compliance measures around ESE. ESE teachers and Gen Ed teachers servicing ESE students often complain about the amount of paperwork that they have to complete. There are reasons for that paperwork. I just mentioned one, over-identification. You don't want to have it, a process that over, quick, too quickly identifies children. But at the same time, you want to have systems in place that are helping teachers support those students in the classroom. So what we've been able to do is we've been able to really increase our Medicaid reimbursement significantly. You have a pretty healthy one. I'd be interested in seeing how you're reinvesting those dollars from your Medicaid reimbursement back into the classroom with your ESE students. That's a question that I have, super curious about. Because those dollars should be getting funneled right back into the classroom to serve those students. So, I mean, I could talk all day about ESE, but that's my quick and dirty answer for you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Tron. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, welcome, Mrs. Kierdo. Delighted to see you again. As a member of the search committee, I did get a chance to talk with you for a while. And I want to start off by saying, you know, in Boston, you have beautiful weather in Miami year-round, right? But in Boston, summer's, or spring is a little late getting here, and the Red Sox have started slow. So we're a little cranky this time of year, I hope you understand that. There'll be plenty of people that tell you all the things that are wrong with Boston public schools. And yes, we certainly have our challenges. I'm interested, though, in, you know, why you're sitting in front of us. What do you see as three good things that you see going on in Boston public schools that you and others have picked up on the national level? And also, in your mind, what are the three biggest challenges that we're facing? And, and while you're thinking about those, I want to say, in, in response back, by the way, you know, when we look and see the work that you have done about closing the, you and Superintendent Carvalho and the entire team have done about closing the achievement gap in Miami, and you've shared a lot of those figures with us tonight, today. Thank you. Those are demonstrable actions that you have taken, and you're getting actual results. And you're one of the few districts in the country getting that. And so that obviously intrigues us. And also the work you've done around turnaround schools, or the F-rated and D-rated schools. And I want to dig into that in a minute. But let's just start with what you see. And so to me, those are things that are going on in Miami that we like. What do you see as a couple of things in Boston that draw you to the, to the opportunity? And then also, what do you see as our biggest challenges?
Okay, so, great question, as always. Thank you for asking questions again. I've, we've, I've gotten to know you through this process. You and Ms. Alexandra Oliver Davila have been great on the search committee, so thank you. So, kind of, I guess I could go back to, in my opening remarks, saying that I wasn't seeking a superintendency, right? And I wasn't. And the reason why Boston is attractive to me, and the reason why I am sitting here before you today, is because I think it's a place that is just ripe with opportunity. I'm not looking for a plum job. I have a pretty plum job in really warm weather. I, and I mean that respectfully. You know, I have an amazing team, they do great work, they're working right now while I'm here, and I'm very confident in their ability. So, I have, I'm in a great spot. The reason why Boston is attractive to me is because I think there's so much opportunity here. And I feel that there is enormous goodwill around equity. Like authentic, authentic goodwill towards equity. That, I don't think you'd, you'd see, a lot of people are saying that word, it's a really sexy word right now, like in all education circles, it really is. But here, I get the sense that it's, it's something that you really value and that you would support someone that came in with a strong equity agenda. And because of that, that's super attractive to me. Another reason why, another thing that attracts me to this position is some folks could easily get overwhelmed by the amount of, I guess, partners or different players in the, in the, or in the, kind of in the vortex of this work. I think that it's such a great asset. I think that, sure, you need, you're just one person, right? So you have to kind of figure that out and work your way through that, how you're going to continue to build relationships and have outreach and, and, and create bridges from the external players into your schools. But I think that it is rich, Boston is rich with existing and potential partners to lean into this work. And while we have amazing partners in Miami, I just really feel that you have a lot more. And I think I said that in, in a previous interview. And then I, you said three. Okay, so, it kind of is related to number one. But let's take equity out of it for a minute. I was, when I listen to, I've listened to some of your school committee meetings. And when I see what you all are doing independently in your communities, and I feel very strongly that you authentically care about the well-being of the children in your communities. And I want to be a vehicle or an instrument for that. And so I think those are really the three things that, that attract me most to this job. There's a lot of others. I sat in the Council of Great City Schools and I listened to Dr. Colin Rose do a bit, and HR, folks from HR, on cultural linguistic sensitivity and awareness, and the work that's being done there, I think, is really important. And I'd just love to be a part of that, and, and that's why I'm here. What was the second part of that question?
What do you see as our biggest challenges?
Oh, wow, okay. There's quite a few, you just have to read the paper, they're already written for you, so it's pretty easy. Your biggest challenges are certainly the gaps that you have in achievement with certain subgroups of children. This notion of, I have it in my closing remarks, but I'll say it now. I rode the, the orange line to Forest Hills, I think I said that right? And with a bunch of children at around dismissal time, young adults. And I saw scores of kids, actually, I was visiting schools all day. So at first I saw the buses crisscrossing the city, and, quite a bit. And then I saw the children riding the train home after school. And I really, I feel that it's, it's a shame, really, that kids have to traverse the city and ride for upwards of two hours to get to what they perceive and their families perceive as a good, a good school. So I want to be a part of that. I want to be a part of, of raising the stature of the schools in their neighborhoods so that they don't feel like they have to leave their neighborhoods to get a high-quality education. So I think that kind of brings me to number two, which is transportation. And I'll give you just a parallel. Your transportation budget is $125 million. The transportation budget in MDCPS is about $69 million. We transport 12,000 students more than you do. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And, and then I've hinted at another one, and the other one is that, that 17% really bothers me. So that, that notion that central office is not necessarily supporting schools, that's, I think that's an easy one personally. But I, because I've been a principal and an assistant principal and a teacher, I, I hope to be able to change that mindset rather quickly. And so I think that this notion that we don't know what central office does, and they're not really supporting us or being responsive to our needs is something that is a weakness, that needs to be corrected. There's more, but I won't say anymore.
Thank you. No, I asked for three, you gave three. And you've mentioned a whole bunch of other things in the course that you've answered, so thank you. Let's talk for a minute about difficult decisions. So, you've obviously, no one in education that's made as far as you have hasn't had to make difficult decisions. And obviously, we have a number of challenges and a number of difficult decisions that this body and past superintendents have faced in Boston, whether it's start times, whether it's grade configurations, whether it's the Build BPS work you've mentioned that will be coming up, or even whether it's autonomy versus accountability. You know, some difficult decisions. So talk to me how you put that together. First, and starting with how you put together your team. How would you see putting together a team here in Boston? And then how would you, and then the team that you put together, approach particularly challenging decisions? And you may, you may decide to, you won't, do your own analysis on some that I'd mentioned, or you may decide to give some examples to Miami-Dade of how you've approached difficult decisions. I'm more interested in that thought process, the team, and then how you, how you approach together difficult decisions.
So, I think the best way of answering that question is just by highlighting what I've had to do as I've stepped into different roles over the course of my career. So I've been doing this work for three decades, and I've had multiple, I have only been in Miami. However, I've, I've had different positions that have required me to kind of restart and regroup and get a new team on board. So I'll give you some examples of that. So, when I became an assistant principal at the school that I was at, that school had lots of challenges, strife with racial tension, and, but had amazing teachers, really, really great teachers. And so, a lot of those teachers at the time were just kind of behind the door, working hard with their children, but not doing a whole lot of planning and collaborating with one another. At that school, where I was for 10 years, I felt like I kind of cut my teeth in learning how to groom teachers and leaders. And one of the things that we did was select the most stellar teachers to work on, leading groups of teachers on developing scope and sequences or a curriculum map. Those curriculum maps today are the foundation for our pacing guides district-wide. That started in a little tiny little school because of the efforts with this team of teachers that were brought together that I facilitated to lead. Many of those teachers are now in positions in central office at the regional level, leading within their content areas. I left that school and I went to a, an elementary school to be a principal after 10 years. I walked in, 36 weeks pregnant, I wobbled into the library to meet my new, my new team, and I didn't know anyone in the room. And I was there for five years. Quickly, I began to see where the leaders instructionally were. Some of them were very tenured teachers, some of them were mildly rookie teachers, maybe in their second or third year. And then, there were really two camps, the senior teachers and the younger teachers. And so I worked with those teachers and cross, kind of teaming them so that they would develop one another and shadow one another and mentor one another. Lots of folks in that school are now, one of them is a principal, several are assistant principals, one is a director at the district office. And so, just finding the talent, it's really hard for me to articulate. But if you ask anyone, and I suspect in all of my references, they will probably tell you that I'm really good at identifying talent. When I left that school, I was recruited by the Commissioner of Education for the state of Florida. I had no team. I was literally picked up from an elementary school, and I was supervising, overseeing turnaround in three different school districts in Florida. And without a team, I had to over, pretty much overnight, create a team of content area specialists that would then support the schools and, and the students that they served across three districts. I did that by looking at data, a lot of it is data-driven. And then looking at, you know, qualitatively, looking at folks that I had kind of had experiences with or had observed them in the classroom, or as supervisors, et cetera, across the three districts. And then, there was a grant that was expiring from the state. And they wanted to just give me those people, because the state didn't know what to do with them, right? The grant expires, you have, you know, 20 people that are now unemployed, and they're like, give it to the new girl in school improvement. And I said, absolutely not. These are people that I, I did not know, some of them I did. But what I did was, I interviewed them, and I actually was on vacation, I was in Europe when I interviewed them. But I, and I selected quite a bit of them, they were excellent, they were literacy experts, but not all of them. And the way I selected them was how they were going to complement one another, because I already knew who I had on board and who I needed to bring in. And so, that's pretty much been my MO. Now, in terms of putting a team together, I, I think it was Steve Jobs that said, I don't, we don't hire an apple, we don't hire the smartest people so we can tell them what to do. We hire the smartest people so they can tell us what to do. I think that's the appropriate quote, and that's how I feel. So I surround myself with folks that are very smart, that have a lot of experience. And then, wherever I need to fill gaps, I do. And you have to be able to look at the entirety of your team to recognize, well, we don't have someone that really understands this piece of the body of work. And then finding folks. And some of it has come from the principal ranks and from the teacher ranks. I spend a lot of time in schools, visiting schools. I communicate a whole lot virtually, through social media and through internal mechanisms with leaders and teachers. So I get to know very quickly who's kind of hitting it out of the park. Did I say that right? And so, whoever's hitting it out of the park, you know, I want to visit their classroom, I want to see what they're about. And that's the way I usually will find talent, by being visible and by connecting with people. And, and just people that complement one another, and certainly that complement me. Difficult decision.
Yes.
So...
Could I just push a little bit more on the team, though, before you move to that? So specifically, coming to the role of superintendent of schools in Boston, you'll have your own cabinet now. How would you envision putting that together?
Well, certainly, I would have conversations with Laura Peril. I know that she's done some of that work already. She's had, she's been in the work for now some time, a significant amount of time. She's had an opportunity to kind of get in a, a bird's eye view of the organization, particularly someone coming from the outside in. I think it's healthy to have a fresh set of eyes. And so I would be interested in hearing where she feels there are needs, what changes she has already made or thinks that the new leader should make. That would be my first kind of stab at, at the apple. And then typically, I suspect... And then typically, I suspect there will be some openings and some positions that will just be open. I would advertise for them. I would interview aggressively for them. And I really believe that you should, I mean, look at the city that we're in. You shouldn't have a shortage of qualified candidates right here. And so I would hope that we could bring people up from the organization. It depends on how healthy that middle layer is that we talked about earlier and how that bench has been developed. Hopefully, it has been. And hopefully, there are people, over time, there's been some succession management planning occurring at the highest levels where there's folks, number twos and number threes in different lines. And if there aren't, then certainly starting to build those number twos and number threes for when someone leaves. I wouldn't, I don't think I, there would be anything that I would do immediate because I think that's how you easily make mistakes. Particularly coming from the outside in. I would spend a whole lot of time working through the organization as is and trying to get a really good sense of people's talents and people's weaknesses or opportunities for improvement. And then over time, kind of correcting or aligning that to best serve the kids in Boston.
And now difficult decisions.
So I don't know if this is a difficult decision. I'll give you a difficult, well, a difficult decision was becoming the assistant superintendent for academics in Miami Dade County Public Schools. I'll tell you why. I was a deputy chief of staff, so I worked in the superintendent's office. Essentially, his top partner, everything dealing with the office of the superintendent, which in retrospect was a great opportunity, right? Long nights, great opportunity, given the context of today's conversation. And then there was a, a need for someone to sit at the helm of the organization academically. And that's, that's, that was where my, my heart was at, and that's certainly where my experience was at. And so an opportunity arose for me to, to take that responsibility. And it was a difficult decision because it was at a very difficult time. It was at a time where the common core was being debated at a national level, PARC, all the computer-based testing programs, just a whole lot of tectonic shifts were occurring nationally and at the state and local level around education. And I stepped into that, that, that role at that time. It was a difficult decision, but that's not the difficult decision I'm sharing with you. What happened was, as a result of that, the communities, there was communities that felt that these higher standards were being done to the children and that children would have, be the collateral when higher standards were being applied to them. And so I spent a lot of time very early on in this role and in my previous role, going to town halls, speaking to lot, lots of different entities, NAACP, the Urban League of Miami, town halls, trying to, to convey what was going to happen, how we were managing that, et cetera. I'll give you a different example. Difficult decision, while I was a deputy chief of staff, a decision was made, which I won't go into the reasons why, but a decision was made to change the bilingual programming in Miami Dade County Public Schools. That's probably the equivalent of changing the mascot for the Boston Celtics. Like, you don't want to touch that, right? And so because Miami is so largely Hispanic, very bilingual, like, you can't touch bilingual programming in MDCPS. And there was a, a reason, and there was actually a group that, an advisory group that recommended to senior staff to change the bilingual program. And I won't go into the specifics of that. I disagreed with that decision, but I wasn't sitting in academics. And so when, I didn't know I was going to sit in academics. When I came into that, this role, I was confronted with that kind of blowing up. It had been like three years. I knew that it wasn't going to be an immediate problem, but I knew that we didn't have the capacity as an organization to do that expansion of this program. It's an extended foreign language program. So essentially, what you need is you need linguistically certified teachers to teach it. And folks weren't thinking like principals. Principals think, okay, so I have my kindergarten and I have five sections of kindergarten, so then I'm going to have five sections of first and five sections of second, and so on and so forth. The district wasn't thinking that way. And so they didn't, couldn't see how that would extrapolate itself out over time and that we didn't have the capacity to grow it in that, in the way that it was envisioned. Fast forward, now I'm in the seat, it's blowing up. We have very strong LULAC and very strong advocacy groups writing articles in the paper, giving interviews with the press that what we're doing is not right and et cetera. And so what I did, a difficult decision I did is I knew that I was going to be, have to be the face of kind of taking that offline. And even though I had disagreed with it, I was now in the seat and I owned it. It was in part of my portfolio. And so what I did was I was very open about it. I did Spanish media, I met with parent groups, I wrote an op-ed in the paper, and then I created a task force. And the task force that I created, I purposefully, my staff was like, you are crazy. And I purposefully selected folks in that task force that were the biggest opponents to what we were doing or what we were saying we were going to do to fix the situation. And what ended up, it, it, it was a year. It was a long and painful process. But I had, I ended up having the support of this group that represented all facets of our community, including the biggest naysayers from the beginning that were now coming to the board, standing behind me, standing with us as we presented this new kind of model, this kind of pivot in the programming to our school board and to the public at large. So difficult decision that was made, that I inherited, that I worked my way out of, and that ultimately, really what's important is not that I worked my way out of it, but that the program that we have now is actually a better model for children. And so that's probably the best example I can give.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Vice Chair Alva Davila.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, is it afternoon yet? I'm with you in spirit up here being sick, so you're doing great for, if you're taking drugs like I am. I, I was going to ask a question about the pivoting, so you kind of answered that. And in terms of working through difficult decisions, I guess what I would want to know, coming from a community perspective in my, in my day job and being part of the community is, can you just give us a sense of what it would look like seeing you unifying the community? So I think you've heard in, in the search committee interviews, you heard from headmasters, parents about the divide that's been happening over the years. And so we're really looking, again, like you mentioned earlier, the champion of our school district. Can you just kind of let us see what it would look like to really unify the community? And when I say the community, I think sometimes, at least in my experience from being a school committee member, it's many times we think of community as just the school and then parents and students. And I liked what you said earlier about having schools open, et cetera. So if you can, when I say community, the whole gamut.
Sure. So, um, so I, I, I guess, I don't know if I should say this. So my boss right now is probably the most recognized person in Miami. He has a very, very well-loved by his community. And the reason I bring that up is because I've had a first round seat to that for ten years. I've, I basically participated in a masterclass on the politics of education. And I'm, I'm very grateful for that because I've been able to witness how he's been able to, to, to really bring a community together, regardless of race, class, culture, country of origin, religion. It really doesn't matter. And so I certainly would take a lot of plays out of his book. But his number one play is really accessibility. Being accessible, to me, I think is really what people want. They want to feel heard. At the end of the day, there are just so many hours in the day and there's work that needs to be done, and I understand that. But I would be the kind of superintendent that would be working very long hours and weekends to make sure that folks saw me in different parts of the community, that I was a visible presence, that I engaged them, and that we were responsive as an organization. When, with one hundred and twenty-five schools, it's, it's, it's a monumental lift. So it's also developing a culture in the organization, and I'm not only talking about central office, but also in schools, of responsiveness. So when we have, we have systems that we've created, many of them that I've finessed over the years, that, that do just that, that serve as points of entry and points of, of, of communication out to communities, not just parents, but communities in general. So I would employ a lot of those same systems that would bore you to death right now if I explained them to you. But they are, they, they create this kind of machine where you're constantly getting information out, receiving inputs and being responsive because nobody likes to send an email and they don't get an email back, right? So that's one thing. The other thing is, we do an enormous amount of town hall meetings all over the city. We have a very large city with thirty-five municipalities. But we spend a lot of time out in the field doing town halls. We also, for working parents, and of course, there are, there are, affluence plays a part in this too, so don't misread what I'm about to say. But for some parents, we, they don't, they don't want to drive. They want to connect digitally. So we have Twitter town halls where we sit with laptops and we're just communicating out to the, they're asking questions, we're answering questions. Those are different streams of communication. Just, I think, really being seen and making sure that people feel heard and creating my own schedule where it allows for that and creating systems in the organization that it's not, it's beyond just me because one person can't be like the funnel, right? And having expectations for, for different departments to do just that and school sites to do just that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Cierro. There's only about, I don't know, three and a half hours more of interviews to go. We'll get you, we'll get you fed eventually. Speaking of which, I was, I was delighted to hear you mention Publix earlier, a place where I worked for two years while I was in high school. Folks that might not know, I, I grew up about twenty miles from Mrs. Cierro in South Florida as well. And I can vouch, you know, Mr. O'Neil might give you a hard time around this issue, but you can certainly keep your old Florida allegiances if you ever do move north.
Oh, there you go. He says no.
I'm still a Dolphins fan twenty-plus years later. Nevertheless, we've, we've certainly moved through quite a clip here today with the questions from my colleagues. And I appreciate especially the focus of the vice chair and Mr. O'Neil on questions about how do you deal, how you specifically deal with folks that might not agree with your worldview or have those difficult conversations or work through the issues that people have a lot of charged opinions about and want to find a common ground for the benefit of all of our children. You know, I appreciate hearing your answers on that, and so I won't spend a lot more time on that. What I do want to focus on, however, is you've, you talked a little bit about opportunity and achievement gaps earlier on in specific response to Ms. Robinson's questions. And, you know, some of the questions that I've had in, in thinking about how you might take some of the, the strategies that you've developed in your time in Miami Dade and, and translate those to Boston Public Schools and Massachusetts. I think about it from the prism of the accountability systems that we work within and the differences that exist between Florida and Massachusetts. And so I wonder if you've had a chance to think about that a little bit and explore how you might take the platform of Miami and the strategies that you've employed in that district, which as you've described and many of us are familiar, is much larger than Miami, excuse me, much larger than, larger than Boston, just as diverse as Boston. How might those translate to, to benefit the children of Boston Public Schools?
So I've, I've done a lot of dialoguing with colleagues from across the country on this topic. And I present on this quite a bit and, and specific to school turnaround. The theory of action, I think, is what you're asking me. Like, what's the theory of action in Miami Dade around school turnaround? And then how would it apply here in Boston? So am I reading your question right? Okay, so for me, it's, it's basically a couple of major areas that we have focused on and we've been very intentional about them. These are priorities for us. And I've talked a lot, and I won't talk much more about standards alignment, but that is our number one lever, is making sure that students have access to on-grade level work and that they are being pushed to the extent of that proficiency of that, of that standard across all subgroups, across all programming is number one. And that's a tier one, if you will, strategy, meaning that's for all schools. Like, there's, it's not about only these schools. Developing teachers and leaders is a second piece of our theory of action. And the amount of time that we spend developing teachers and leaders is monumental. And I think it, it drives everything that happens at the school level. And I've seen some, and I've read some of the practices here in Boston, and I feel that there's a whole lot of opportunities for improvement in that regard. I think, I could be wrong, and I'm looking forward to talking to them later. But I think that in many ways, because of autonomous schools and because of autonomy and the value of autonomy, that's, in many cases, principals are left to their own devices, for lack of a better word, in terms of developing their teachers. And there has to be some areas that the central office is saying, these are our big three things we're going to work on this year, whether it's social-emotional learning or using data to drive instruction or mental health, whatever the case may be, or standards alignment, unpacking the standards, whatever those big ones are that need to permeate down to the school and to the classroom level. And then what the principals also do with their staffs is a gravy, right? Like, that's the, their own unique, very local kind of development because they're where the, where the, where the teaching is happening, right? Closest to where the teaching is happening. But the system itself needs to also have, drive professional development. That, to me, is vital. We do a whole lot of that during the year. We spend a lot of money in that regard. And that also goes to, which I didn't get an opportunity to say to Dr. Rivera's question around, you know, diversity and talent, because you have to groom people and you have to invest in people. We can't be a learning organization and not value learning for the grownups. Like, it's only for kids. Like, we have nothing to learn. And so I want to be a part of an organization that embraces that mentality and that wants to grow its adults as well. And that's something that we do very much. Aligning resources to the greatest need, we talked a little bit about that to Quoc, am I saying that correctly, sir?
Yes.
To Quoc Trans' question regarding, regarding what equity means, driving more resources where they're needed most, whether that's programmatic or school site. So for instance, the strategy that we utilize with Title I, I think, is a huge lever in Miami Dade. I'm really interested in learning more about how you spend your Title I dollars in BPS. But we are very intentional about differentiating dollars in Title I as they flow out to schools. So we tier our schools. I know that Michael wanted to ask a turnaround question, so I'll kind of fold it in here, where we look at all of the accountability criteria. We look at the formula, and this is something that I would do to your question. We look at the formula, we unpack that formula, right? So I know, for instance, I've learned that attendance is part of your formula. Attendance is not part of the formula in Florida. But when you unpack that formula, you're going to then aggregate those points and you're going to start tiering your schools. You're going to rank them. You're going to rank order them. And for us, our highest priority schools are that top fifteen percent, or you can look at it as the bottom fifteen percent. And then the next ten percent after that is our tier two, and then everyone else is tier one. And so the way that we approach the work in a tier two school and a tier, in a tier three school and a tier two school and a tier one school is very different. And the way that we distribute resources is very different too. Title I is a part of that, but it's not the only part of that. I spoke to that, this earlier, that when facilities is making a decision, they're looking at going here first before they're going here. When budget is making a decision, they're looking at maximizing revenues here instead of going here first. So aligning resources where there are the greatest needs is another piece of our theory of action. Expansion of advanced academic programming, again, that's everywhere, is something that's critically important, that raises the quality of education in all schools, not just in some schools. So making sure whether it's IB, dual enrollment, AP, Cambridge, Capstone, making sure that there are opportunities, not just advanced work class, but that there are multiple ways that students can act. that students can access rigorous academic programming is a big part of this work. Um, two more. Using data to drive instruction in all facets of the organization, but particularly on the school improvement side of the house, vitally important, and I can do three hours of how we do that. And then having a laser-like focus on our most fragile schools. That is what you could anticipate would be my MO, if you will, for dealing with, um, the, the schools that are in turnaround, targeted, or comprehensive. But it would, it would be edited or finessed based on the accountability formula for Massachusetts, but it's not that different.
Understood. Um, you know, I wanted to do a time check. I think we only have a few minutes before three o'clock, and so, um, kind of at that time and knowing that I've spent almost as much time as Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Oliver Davila in speaking with you over the last few weeks as well, I want to give an opportunity for my fellow members, if there are any last burning questions that we haven't had an opportunity to ask. It looks like Dr. Rivera has a question. And then, of course, we'll have some time for you to give a closing statement. We did start a few minutes late.
No problem.
Yes, thank you for allowing me one more question. In two thousand and two, Massachusetts passed the English for the Children Act, which outlawed bilingual education. Uh, question two, okay, so that's what I just wanted to know, what you know about that, what its impact has been on English language learners? And also how we are going to implement the Look Act, which was passed in last year, last summer, um, which now allows our school district to offer more than just sheltered English immersion. So it's a really critical issue, and I wondered if you could say a little bit about, about these different models, how we might do more dual-language instruction, what do you know about the Look Act?
So, um, I, I went like this to you because I thought it was called question two, right? At the time?
Well, the origi, yes, it was.
Yeah. So I, well, first of all, it was, that's criminal. Um, so I, I did read about that, and what I know about that is that, um, the outcomes were predictable, which is that students started sliding. They weren't, um, uh, getting reclassified, they weren't accelerating their fluency, they were not meeting standards, um, and I know that it was pulled back. Um, what I know that, I think I know, is that, that you have different models, um, in Boston, whether it's, I think you call them transitional, as well as structured English immersion, you call it transitional, which we call CCHL, which is content through the home language. So it's part of the day is spent and be, the content is being taught in the student's home language and part of it is not. And bilingual, bilingual programming is part of that as well. What I, my opinion on the matter, um, and it's funny because everyone thinks I'm an expert because I happen to be Hispanic, and I would never profess to be an expert on ESOL instruction. I had ESOL students in my class and I was trained, um, by the, by the district on ESOL strategies and how to work with students that are learning English and acquiring English during social studies. Um, and I think that that's one of the areas that was very flawed in BPS, was that there wasn't, from what I read, there wasn't significant support provided to teachers. So the professional development, it seems to me, from what I've read, wasn't there. Whenever we have changes to, to programming, we need to support our teachers. We can't just think that they're going to thrive and that our children are going to thrive as a result of that. Now, what I, how I feel about bilingual education is that I don't think that there's a one-size-fits-all model. I think some communities and some sets of children thrive in a CCHL or transitional, um, kind of environment more than others. I think that the research is very compelling, that students, um, are, when they're learning a second language, sometimes they accelerate their, the, the other, the first language or primary language as well. Um, so for me, I, I, we really have a pretty broad portfolio in Miami Dade of how we do this work. Um, but at the end of the day, it's really all about teacher quality, the materials, the standards, the instructional materials that we're supporting these teachers with, the professional development that we're providing them, and holding kids to high expectations. And then for me, for us, what bilingual education has become is more of, um, it's a choice. So we have pockets of families that want extended foreign language, and so we create pathways for extended foreign language. And then we have schools that are completely bilingual schools. So we pop up schools that are bilingual schools, K-eight. So it's, it's not like a one-size-fits-all, it's just making sure that people are, uh, supported and that students can, if, if they're ESOL, they're gaining fluency at an accelerated rate while they're still meeting the demands of the other content areas. And then what I love about, I think, about your accountability, I think, about your accountability system, and I know it's now coming to Florida for the first time because of ESSA, is that now we're looking at students' fluency in their home language. So that, to me, is a marker of, oh, well, you know, if I pick up and move my kids to China, my kids are high-performing, they're going to do really poorly on a state test written in Chinese. But they very well may be masters in math, science, and social studies. So the notion that we're finally, you know, understanding that this is a country of immigrants, that there's a high population of, of students that do not speak English as a first language, and that we're looking at monitoring their progress through our school system in a way that's fair and equitable to them, I think is, is really what, is, is something that I'm excited to be a part of. And so, um, I think that might be my answer to your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera, and, uh, thank you again to all of my--
I do have--
Dr. Coleman, please.
One more question. Thank you very much. It's a long day, and, and so my last question is, in, in two thousand and nineteen, how do you think a focus on racial economic integration is still a relevant strategy for closing the achievement gap?
Well, if I understand your question correctly, um, this work is very important because it's not just about the kids. This work is really important because it's about our local econ- economic well-being and the well-being of communities. I think that obviously, like any other large urban, um, city in America, you have affluence and you have high poverty blocks away from one another. And so I think that the school system is, and I, and I, and I, in Boston more than in a lot of other places, there is a really deep understanding of what that means. And that if we improve the quality of schools and the quality of the education that children receive, that we can lift communities, entire communities. And so for me, I'll, I guess, my answer to your question is where I started, which is, kids are coming to school, you guys use the word opportunity gaps a lot, use opportunity and achievement gaps. Opportunity gaps, to me, occur in schools, and we have certainly a lot of, um, opportunities to close opportunity gaps in schools, but children come to the schoolhouse door with enormous gaps before they ever enroll in our schools. And those gaps are a result of inequities in their community, whether it's food insecurity, housing, violence, you name it, that they, the lack of health care, those, those are variables that are affecting them and creating a, a huge wealth gap. That wealth gap is then bringing them, delivering them to our schoolhouse door with great opportunity gaps. They don't have enough words as other children, they don't have the same schooling perhaps in pre-K that other, other children, et cetera. They don't have supports at home when they go home to help them with homework and go to parent conferences, et cetera, because their parents are working, or they're incarcerated, or they're whatever. And so we, as a school system, are trying to work within here, within this area, but we can't do this work alone. We know that we need, and that's why Boston is so attractive, we need all these other external players to help us, to your question regarding like wraparound services and things of that nature. Because only if we have those other inputs, um, in helping kind of those children develop, then we have a hope of internally giving them a diploma at the end of twelve, thirteen years that makes them viable for college or career, and ultimately then ra- breaking that cycle of poverty that they're stuck in. And so that's the role that I think that the school system has, but it, it has to be a champion in the community that, hey, we can't do this work alone, we need all of these people to line up. And frankly, what I see as a, a challenge in Boston is that there's a whole lot of desire and a lot of voice around that, but everyone's not necessarily rowing in the same direction. So you have, if you're in a kayak and everybody's rowing in a different direction, you're not going to get very far. And so what you're looking for in a superintendent is you're looking for the guy in the back with the megaphone that's counting strokes, right? And is saying, okay, this is the way that we're going to go, and I need you all to be behind me, and trust me, if we do this together, we can, we can get to where we want to get with our children.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and thank you once again, Mrs. Cierdo. As you can see, we've got, um, a lot of folks swimming in the same direction, at least hopefully, up on this, um, up on this board, and, uh, we, you know, deeply appreciate you spending some time getting to know us. And, uh, as I, uh, alluded to earlier, you've only got, uh, three-plus hours to go here today, um, so you've got plenty more--
Almost there.
--people to, uh, you know, continue this conversation. But, um, I do, uh, before we let you go, want to allow you to have a, a moment for a brief closing, uh, comment, and then I will move on to, uh, some orienting information before we move on to the next, uh, panel.
Thank you. Um, I was long-winded in the first panel, so I'll be very brief, hopefully, folks that are listening, hopefully got to hear the other longer version of this. But essentially, first of all, I want to thank you again, I know I've thanked you already, but I will tell you that I have colleagues that have gone through this process, and I also read about this process around the country. And I can tell you that the manner in which Boston has, um, managed and, and driven this search for a superintendent is admirable, it is notable, and it should be recognized as a best practice. Um, and I'm eternally grateful for the level of stress that I have right now. But I know that it's because, um, you want to do right by kids, and so kudos to you for, for doing, for putting so much effort into this. Um, what I said earlier today, and I'll reiterate, um, and I've mentioned it already, is that fortunately, in this city, doesn't have any shortage of extraordinary universities and partner organizations. And I've read so much, whether it's, you know, the, I, I can't even tell you all the different, um, reports that I've read, even in the last four months, around the what? What has to happen? What has to happen here? The, I think that that's, that's pretty much evident, and it's, uh, it's been in print quite a bit. What you're tasked with now is the how. And to get to the how, in many ways, you're tasked with the who. So who is going to be the next leader of Boston Public Schools? And what I submit to you is that, um, I don't think that you're, I think you'll be hard-pressed to find someone that has the level of experience that I have, um, the level of commitment to this work, um, and, and then the outcomes that we've been able to achieve, my team and I have been able to achieve in Miami Dade. Yes, Boston is very diverse, so is Miami. Um, yes, Boston is an urban school district, Miami is six times the size of Boston Public Schools. We have seventy thousand students that are, um, on, on free and reduced lunch, we have thirty-seven thousand, sorry, seventy-four percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch, we have seventy thousand students that are learning English as a second language, we have thirty-seven thousand children that are students with disabilities, we have fifty-five hundred homeless students. We have students that come from a hundred countries, speaking fifty-six languages in thirty-five municipalities. That's very, very complex. So when people start telling me, well, it's really complex, can you handle it? This is really complex, you know, I tell them, well, you know, take a look at, at the body of work and let the body of work speak for itself. Um, in terms of my accomplishments, I think that you're aware of them, um, but I want to make something clear, I'm much more than an academician. Um, I am not a one-trick pony. Just because I serve in the role of chief academic officer, do not be fooled by my level of influence and the, um, the manner in which I have shaped the trajectory of Miami Dade County Public Schools, I'm very proud of that. I've done that with, um, my supervisor, I've done that with my colleagues, it's been a team effort, and we're very, very proud of that work. But I am not just an academician. What I am is, I have on my desk a glass, um, structure, a glass piece that's a knot, like a nautical knot, and I have it on my desk for a reason because someone gave it to me and they told me, you're an entire of knots. I typically will gravitate to where the problems are and try to resolve them and try to solve for them. That's just my nature. I, I am a uniter of people and I am a systems thinker, and I think that's what you need in Boston Public Schools. I think you need someone that's done this work and has done it successfully at scale. And there's been a lot of questions about what you did in Miami and what you're going to bring when you come here from Miami. And really, I want you to understand that if I am selected as your candidate, um, I come here with the intention of listening, learning, and leading, in that order. Um, I know that I do not, I'm not a Bostonian, that's no surprise, and I would be leaving warmer weather, but I'd be gaining great teams, and I'm a sports enthusiast, so I'm excited about that. I would lead with a lens of equity, opportunity, and innovation, and I would not come with a set of preconceived solutions. And that's basically, you know, who I am. I'm a fairly transparent person, I'm not someone, I'm, I'm someone that you can pretty much read by just looking at me, and I come to you with the most goodwill possible. It is a, it would be a personal sacrifice for me, I would be kind of accelerating, um, what I, my plans, but things don't always go to plan, right? It's like having a baby, you're not really ever ready to have a baby and voila, you're a mom. So it's, I, I, you know, I kind of draw parallels to that. And so this, right now, is a really defining moment for Boston Public Schools, and you really only need to know two things about me. The first thing you need to know about me is that I will always place children at the center of all decision-making, I am not apologetic about that. Sometimes that doesn't make people very happy, but that's going to always be my north star. And I've always, in whatever capacity I've served in, I am a servant leader, I've always exceeded everyone's expectations. And so I don't think that Boston would be any different, and I would be honored to be your superintendent of schools. It is a pivotal point in this city and, and in this district, and I wish you the best of luck in selecting your next superintendent. Thank you.
Well, thank you once again, Mrs. Cierdo, that's very much appreciated. You've served as a trooper throughout this process, and we appreciate not only your interest in Boston, but your, um, the great deal of experience that you bring to this position, um, or this candidacy, I should say, and, um, and your continued desire to, to work with us. So I want to take just a moment to remind folks in the audience, first of all, thank you, everyone who's attended today, as well as watched online. Um, we've had a number of former school committee members in the audience, our, uh, other co-chair from the search committee, Dr. J. Keith Motley's joined us, a number of other, um, current and former school leaders, uh, and community partners have been here today, and so we thank them for, um, being a part of this process. Uh, for those of you that have been watching online and in person, you can learn more about the candidates and view the public interview schedule at bostonpublicschools.org/superintendentsearch. And people are also encouraged to email feedback to superintendentsearch@bostonpublicschools.org and visit the survey that's now available on the BPS website for members of the public to provide feedback directly to the committee on each of the candidates. The surveys will remain open until midnight on Sunday, April twenty-eighth, and the committee is tentatively scheduled to take a final vote on the next superintendent next Wednesday, May first. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public interview. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, that sounds like a second from Ms. Robinson, and we are now adjourned. Thank you again.